Alright, it's working.
It's working, you can see her.
Thank you. Good evening to our Kain family and friends. This is a public hearing for Kain's identification of receivership. All required by New York State Education Department to notify the public thirty days within the start of a school year of Kain's identification in receivership, what that means for a school overall, and then ultimately what we are doing to take steps either in our ELA and math scores, in our achievement for students, in ELA and math, or attendance, safety issues in the building. And so tonight's presentation will kind of share some updates about where we are at this point in time, as much as I can certainly publicly share with the community, but also some of the clear action steps that we're taking as a building to address some of the indicators that New York State is holding us to. So we always ground our presentations in the district's vision and mission and tagline. Our district's overall vision is that instead we will be continually improving these school districts, dedicating excellence in teaching and learning. Our district's tagline, everybody counts, everybody learns, and our values is centered in equity, collaboration, and student learning. We also organize ourselves around four key pillars of success. The first area being student graduate success, so how we can make moves towards ultimate graduation achievement results, how it is that we retain and onboard and keep passionate people within our organization, how we partner with families and our community, and then our fourth pillar is establishing efficient systems and equitable resources across centerpieces and schools. And then we ground ourselves in the mission for Kain Elementary School, where we believe that every child can be successful. That in our community of parents, students, and staff, we instill a love of learning, but we're all Kain giants, and together we awaken in our curiosity, identity, and choice to achieve rigorous academic standards through a culture of the relative critical. So for those of you that are following along, there's some slides that you have in front of you. Certainly folks at home can kind of just pay attention to some of these slides around what is receivership. So this comes out of federal law, and that New York State Education Department has established kind of an accountability system for schools that helps us rank where we sit in our ELA and math score achievement. That this is driven under the Federal Student Success Act under federal law, and then New York State's accountability system is the state law that drives us. And then ultimately, in receivership, what New York State did, and I'll show you on a subsequent slide, is identify schools that fell into the bottom five percent of schools in New York State regarding achievement for English language arts, math, and attendance. We are required to form a community engagement team, which our community schools coordinator, Mr. Cook, heads and spearheads for our school. And that committee usually needs quarterly to review some of the data that we're experiencing internally. Those are welcome to faculty members of the community, members that we partner with. Really, it's an open invitation for anyone that wants to join us in our thinking around the work that we do at Kain. And then we are required to hold this public hearing. As part of receivership, we are held to certain indicators, some of which New York State identifies for us, and some of which we're allowed to choose on our own, and I'll share some of those with you shortly. And really, the intent of the law is to help schools from New York State Education Department really turn around. So when schools are struggling, New York State wants to make sure that they help to provide us with some support and regulations to ensure that every student can be successful. But what does this really mean for Kain? So to get specific, and I kind of establish a timeline here so you can see that in 2015 to 2017, Kain's data showed decline over time. And that identification of showing years of decline put Kain into a level of receivership falling into the bottom five percent of New York State schools for ELA, math, science, and attendance. At that time, the superintendent would serve as receiver, which is still true under the law today, that our superintendent will serve as receiver, which gives him or her power to make some different decisions for this school specifically if needed. In 2018, 2019, Kain Elementary School did meet eight of the ten indicators. However, in New York State, we are still required to meet ten of the ten indicators. So unfortunately, while we showed significant growth that year, it wasn't enough to show a year of full growth. In 2019, 2020, as those folks remember, we did go out on COVID, which really put a pause on the New York State accountability system for the next few years, where New York State deemed us in no harm, meaning our state testing scores that once we reactivated the system could not put us further into receivership, rather than just pull us kind of a status quo where we were prior to COVID. And then in 2022, 2023, schools in receivership were going to remain in receivership for the New York State Education Department, and that they started a modified basic criteria in July, Thursday, 2023. In 2324, last year, we reset some of our progress targets based on some of our indicator groups. And this year, we are going to continue to monitor the progress targets and wait for the state to review our progress. So after New York State testing, they review our progress, and probably in the next few months, we'll get some embargo data released to us so that we can kind of make some determinations of where we stand as a building. So oftentimes, people ask how do we get out of receivership? Really, the New York State testing is clear indicators. So the New York State test in ELA and math, so our students that will sit for this test, I highlighted up here on the slide, in grades three, four, and five, they will sit for this test in late April, early May for ELA and for math. And our attendance achievement, which is measured at the end of the year, so we do require our children to be here ninety percent or more of the school year ideally. We would love to have children here one hundred percent of the school year. But certainly, we do understand that children get sick, and that there's excusable reasons for children to be absent. But really, what we are held to is what's called a chronic absenteeism target, which we'll talk about shortly. So really, how do we get out? We show two consecutive years of growth across the indicators that I'll talk to you about shortly. And that once we kind of hit those targets, we have a rule which was a CS five status. And then we can come out of this level of receivership and we would move into what's called comprehensive support and improvement or targeted support, depending on our achievement. And then we follow our continuation plan, which I'll share with you shortly what we do in our continuation plan, and continue to monitor our progress. I think in the public hearing portion, it's really important to know that we don't do this work in isolation, that this is a partnership with our families and our community to ensure that all of our children can be successful. So these are the dimensional progress indicators that we identified for last year and that we still are fully true to for this year. I highlighted some pit areas that we made changes to last year because we did have to adjust some of our dimensional progress indicators because some of the indicators that we had previously, we no longer have a subgroup for. And so New York State said, you don't have enough children in this subgroup anymore, so now you need to pick some new ones. So those are the ones that are highlighted so that you can see some of those changes. And sometimes, New York State assigns us some targets based on some of our other performances. So certainly, school safety was added here, how our students performed on the ELA. As a growth target, it's this one that's up here for thirty-three. And then you will see ELA E D, that stands for economically disadvantaged. So oftentimes, our children are compared to how our children that are living in poverty are doing compared to children that are above the poverty line. And so we make that comparison to make sure that our system is meeting the needs of all of us. And so these are the indicators that we call to. Level one indicators are indicators that New York State assigns to us. We don't have a choice. They tell us we have to do these indicators. Level two indicators are the ones that we're allowed, as a building, to make some choices around. And so you'll see, and I'll be speaking some of these, that we make choices around about the work that we think is really important in addition to supporting our students with English language arts and math instruction and attendance. But certainly, our community school model down here for indicator two, how it is that we engage our families and communities is an important indicator for us as well, as we are a community school. And then certainly, like getting eyes on classrooms and seeing what's actually happening at the classroom level is also an important piece for us to monitor and watch. And so you do have this slide in front of you. I did have to put a big bar down on what's considered bar code data. I'm not allowed to speak to it publicly necessarily. I can give you some roundabout things of what I'm seeing as trends and patterns, and I'll speak into those in subsequent slides. But really, I think that we are seeing some really positive trends at Kain Elementary School, both in English language arts, in math, and among chronic absenteeism reduction. And so I'll talk in more detail with you there. But you can see what I have on this slide, and some folks might have in front of them. It just does outline to you kind of what we are here for in 2324. This column will say whether we met that target or not. And this will show you our target for 2425 and then 2526. And so what New York State is saying is across these three years, it's not that you just have to hit one target, you have to continue to close that gap over time. And so this slide, I think, captures really nicely how we have to show our growth over the course of three years. And so oftentimes, people ask, so what are you doing at Kain Elementary School to close these gaps? What are some turnaround strategies that this school needs to really try to use? And so in our continuation plan, we break this down into four areas. So what we know is that teachers that get to learn together will grow together, and they form better instructional practices. And so professional learning communities are a core turnaround strategy for us. This is a New York State approved strategy as well. But this looks like teachers coming together throughout the course of the day, analyzing student work, talking about curriculum instruction, analyzing how students are doing on assessments, and making changes for the children who are achieving proficiency on some of these quizzes and tests, and so, and what are we doing about the students that maybe are just about there, and then what are we doing for students that are well below where they need to be at this point in time. So that's what a professional learning community will do for our teachers. We also have our special area teachers as part of professional learning communities this year. So our art teacher, music teacher, PE teachers, our social work staff are all part of these professional learning communities because we do know and understand that we wrap around a child, and that a child learning vocabulary in English is just as important as them learning that same vocabulary word, what that might mean in phys ed. And so our teachers are actively part of that E L C on A days and B days in our rotation. Another turnaround strategy we have is community school model. As I mentioned before, Mr. Cook is our community schools coordinator here at Kain Elementary School. We are growing our community school. We are still continuing to assess our families to determine what are the needs and what are the barriers that some of our families experience related to school, and how do we help dismantle some of those barriers that exist and makes Kain a very welcoming place that really solicits families' voices inside of the work that we do in our schools. Restorative justice is another turnaround strategy. And so the way that I can describe this to the staff is that most of us have probably lived in a punitive disciplinary model where we got punished for the things that happened to us at school. Sometimes that looks like detention, suspension, expulsion from school. And what we understand deeply in an organization is that we are a teaching organization, that kids aren't being naughty or doing, making some choices that aren't healthy for them because they want to, but rather, they may not have the skills necessary. And so how do we help support children in coping mechanisms that they might need for dealing with stressful situations, for solving conflict with friends? And so we have a full-time restorative justice specialist named Mr. Aaron, who works inside of our school, and thinking about, yes, there are times where we implement a code of conduct and that there would be a punitive measure for behavior, but oftentimes, we try to get to the root cause of what's happening with the child in order to help teach into the behavior we hope to see at school. And then our third turnaround, our fourth turnaround strategy is school climate revitalization. We think of this in two different directions. One is kind of the physical plant of the school, so how does our school look like a true school? How do we make sure that we attend to the school so that kids are proud and families are proud of the school that they send their children to? And then the other side of this is how it is that kids see themselves inside of a classroom? How is their work being represented visually inside of the classroom? How do we see their culture or their identity represented inside of our school as well? Okay, so some indicators. What I did break down for you is this is the person here. You have it probably in front of you if you want to get a closer look. You can certainly right on these slides and come on for yourselves. But what I tried to break down is what is our performance basis from twenty-seven, twenty-eight to eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then this most recent, which I can't reveal to you, but out there clear is a pretty nice number. That's an increase from where we were next year. But I also indicated to you here their COVID hit. So that you can see, this is really the number that we want to see go up over time. So it's a sophisticated formula that New York State uses where they, students are assigned a score of one, two, three, or four. Scores of three or four would be what we would design, what we would designate as proficient, meaning like a passing score on a New York State test. And then a one or two would be just below or well below a benchmark in New York State. And so this number kind of averages and gives more weight to kids that are getting fours and threes than kids that are getting twos and fives. And so this is the number that kind of comes out of that formula. It's called a M I P, measure of indicative progress. But this number, you can see, is going up over time. The other way that you can see this is percent proficient. And so back in seventeen, eighteen, we were eighteen point five nine percent proficient, meaning twenty-nine out of one hundred and fifty-six of our kids that sat for the New York State test in grades three, four, and five achieved a three or a four on that test. And then in eighteen, nineteen, we had forty-three out of one hundred and forty-eight. And then post-COVID, we had fifteen out of one hundred and thirty-one. And last, the year before, this past April week test, we had nineteen out of one hundred and twenty-one. And this year, we did go up approximately ten percentage points. I can't tell you what that means as far as proficiency because it's still in bar code. But an increase in proficiency overall means that we are showing positive gains in how our students are performing for English language arts. The important thing too is like our target, so what New York State says we have to hit is fifty-three point nine, and that's this number right here. So our number has to be higher than fifty-three point nine. Over on the slide, I'll to reveal it in the twenty-three, twenty-four. So as of last year, we had already hit the target from New York State, but as you saw on that like third slide, that is an increasing number over time. So we do want to continue to see that number up. And I would think that most people would agree that nineteen of one hundred and twenty-one kids came proficient on New York State exam in this school is not nearly high enough. So you can work. This is indicator thirty-three. This is a growth indicator. I don't have a number related to this, but if our proficiency number is going up, we do believe that our growth number is going up. So a proficiency number is one time when little Carrie Messler takes the test, you do a dipstick and see how she does. A growth means how did I do when I was a third grader as compared to when I was a fourth grader compared to when I'm a fifth grader? And am I showing growth over time? And so New York State has to do a sophisticated algorithm. Usually, it comes out late November, December for us to get this report from New York State Education Department. Again, this is another growth indicator that we don't know until New York State reveals it to us. But again, if we're increasing our proficiency, ideally, we probably are seeing growth among our students overall. And then a similar number, this is how our economically disadvantaged students, so just to go back a few slides, this indicator does help all kids do. So this was a fifty-seven point eight-five. And then this is specifically how is it that economically disadvantaged students do? So when we put the students who live below the poverty line, and that it comes to us from census information that we capture, how is it that our economically disadvantaged students compare to our non-economically disadvantaged students? So overall, if the performance is around a fifty-seven, and our economically disadvantaged students are performing around a fifty-three, it's relatively close. We've pretty much closed an achievement gap that could exist for children that live in poverty as compared to non-impoverished. And again, this target in this area is a forty-two point eight. And obviously, as a flash here, we're at a fifty-three point four-three. And we do anticipate our number going up in this area as well. And so these are some of the things that we do in English language arts in order to help support students with their English language instruction. And so if you have a child in our school, you should be hearing some of these things. Some kids should be talking about Witten Wisdom, that's our core ELA program. They might talk about it as a module, they might be talking about in fourth grade, they're learning about the figurative and literal heart. In fifth grade, they might be learning about the Mezpers, Native Americans. But certainly, you could ask children, your child, what they're learning about in Witten Wisdom. That's again our core goal. We do these foundations in pre-K, K one, and two. Foundations is our phonics program that helps the kids learn explicit letters and sounds. Hegery is a program we use for phonemic awareness, so how do those letters come together and start to form longer sounds? We use Hegery in grades K one, two. And then we do have our I Ready assessment. If you haven't gotten those reports at home yet, they should be coming shortly. We're just closing our I Ready benchmarking cycle. This is again, an internal measure that we use, an assessment that our teachers use to understand who is it that's in need of support, whether that's reading services or math services. Our I Ready assessments do help us with that level of information. And then from that information, if your child either got a two or a one on the New York State test, or they're struggling as a reader or a mathematician, we do form intervention groups. So another letter that you may see come from me shortly because I just signed off on a bunch for math. But I did sign off on the reading letters already. If your child is in need of reading support or AIS support during the school day for reading, you will see a letter that says that they're getting additional intervention within the course of their school day, and math letters should be coming shortly. And so now shift to our math instruction. This is how all students perform. Again, that's a dipstick, a one-time assessment when they last sat for the state test. How did they do? In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a forty-eight point seven seven. This year, we're anticipating almost a twenty percent increase. And so that's an un-formal number, it's not an official number yet. But we did see a pretty significant increase in math with quite a few students who are achieving an increase from sixteen of one hundred and twenty-seven to more than sixteen of one hundred and twenty-seven achieving proficiency on the New York State math test. And again, just to organize yourselves, the target that we had is a forty point one from New York State Education Department. And as a flash here, we had already exceeded that target of forty-eight point seven seven. So we anticipate it also going higher than forty point one this year as well. This is again, the comparison, this is E D label up here. So indicator one fifteen says how are economically disadvantaged students compare? So here you'll see we're at forty-seven point seven seven or forty-eight point seven seven here for all students, economically disadvantaged students at a forty-four point one seven. And statistically, this is close enough that we wouldn't necessarily see this. This could be one child, or even a percentage of how a child performed on the state test. So not specifically to say that that's an economic lead gap. If it was twenty points difference, we would look at that and say, why is our instruction benefiting our non-economically disadvantaged students at a better rate than our economically disadvantaged? And what might they need in order to help close that gap? And again, that target from New York State was a thirty-four point five. Last year, we were at thirty-four point seven, and we do anticipate almost fifteen percent increase. This is a growth indicator, so similarly to the ELA, New York State does not calculate growth just yet. They ask to have a little bit of extra time while they continue to do their algorithms for growth measurement. And so some of the things that we're doing in math, we do have a brand new math curriculum this year. So similarly to Witten Wisdom for a core ELA program, we just secured a new math program that's through I Ready, which you might be like, oh, that's the same thing as the benchmark. It is the same product design, but they also offer a curricular solution. And so our teachers are learning about, they learned about this math curriculum this summer. They attended professional development at the beginning of the school year in order to launch this new math instruction which we think will be a much better solution than the Eureka math initiative. We also this year have, we started, highlighted this last year, the intervention that we use for math. So if your child is receiving math intervention support, Bridges is the intervention that we use to provide students with what's called AIS math, or academic intervention support. We also have a product called Reflex, which is kind of a gamified way of kids playing numbers and playing with math fluency and math concepts. So that's another product that we have in order to help address that with math. We also have a full-time math coach. We have that common planning time of professional learning community. And we purchase all new math manipulatives, so those are little like cubes or counting blocks that the kids can use. We have plenty of those for every single student inside of our school that aligns to the core math program. We have two math AIS teachers and a math teaching assistant that helps support math. And now for our attendance indicator. So this number is kind of confusing, so I want to make sure I keep drawing our attention to the fact that we want this number to go down. So this indicator is what's called a chronic absenteeism rate. So the way that I think about this and the way that we break this down, inside of school, Ms. Greggs is our attendance specialist for Kain Elementary School. Chronic absenteeism means that a child is missing more than ten percent of the school year. So in a hundred and eighty-day school year, it's a child that's missing eighteen days or more. That could be an excused absence, it could be an unexcused absence. In the eyes of New York State, an absence is an absence because a child is missing out on instruction in the classroom. So anything more than eighteen days across the course of a school year puts a child into a chronic absenteeism category. And so Ms. Greggs and our attendance team monitor this data daily, weekly, and then she pulls the team together every week in order to analyze who is it that may be falling behind. And so in September, we've already been through a month of school, so she's already looking at those numbers to see if a child has been absent already two times, it's putting them on track to be chronically absent. If they were to miss two days every single month of school, it would put them into this category. And so she has a team of people that make phone calls, try to find out what's the reasons that children are absent, and how to be helped support families in getting their children here every single day of school. And so what you can see is before COVID, we were hovering around a fifteen percent chronic absenteeism. That means that fifteen percent of the three hundred kids that attended Kain Elementary School were in this category of missing eighteen days of more school. The year of COVID, we went to a thirty-three point seven percent chronic absenteeism rate. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, post-COVID, our chronic absenteeism rate skyrocketed. It skyrocketed to sixty-nine point three percent of our children were chronically absent, meaning in this year alone, they missed more than nineteen days of school, sixty-nine percent of the population. And then last, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had, we made a pretty significant reduction. We gained over fifty-eight point three percent of our students were chronically absent. That's still more than half of our population in grades one through five were chronically absent from school. And then as we closed up last year, our overall rate was a forty-seven point seven percent chronically absent. So we're just below that fifty percent mark. But that does mean that over fifteen, over fifty percent of our school missed nineteen or more days of school. And some of those kids might have missed forty-five days of school, some of those kids might have just missed nineteen. But regardless, when you're missing that much school, you're really missing out on really important instruction, whether it's something from Witten Wisdom, I Ready Math, your intervention group. So that's why attendance would mean here a hundred percent of the time we're done at our school. Our target from New York State is that we can have no more than sixty-six percent of our population chronically absent. And so hitting the forty-seven point seven percent target does mean that we did mean this indicator. Some people, like you see this slightly, slightly different way. So I showed on this slide, you can see a slightly different way where we look at the average daily attendance rate. So on any particular day, how many children are actually attending school? And so this number up here captures that the increase that we've seen over time in most recently of last year, eighty-seven point two six percent of our kids are attending school for kindergarten. And then I broke it down, we look at this by grade level. Although these two, these two grade levels are not considered in our count for New York State because New York State only looks at grades one through five for chronically absent. Our building overall, Ms. Greggs's attendance team does look at grade ten and grade ten to see how many kids are chronically absent in those grade levels. So this does give you a breakdown by grade level. I would say that these numbers are pretty rewarding because this is where kids learn to read. And so when we have that many kids in pre-K and kindergarten that are absent when they're supposed to be learning their letters and sounds, and how letters come together to form words, and words form sentences, it is really a very hard gap for us to close over time when children are missing out on the foundations of learning to read and learn to do math, and what numbers mean and their sense of numbers. So these numbers are a place that we really do want to intervene in pretty intensely because this is a, almost sixty percent of our pre-K kids can have that much means that they're missing out on a lot of really important instruction. This lets me give a breakdown by grade level, so it shows you a slightly different way. Kindergarten here at the top, and then for chronic absenteeism, that we had most kindergartners are chronically absent, followed closely by kindergarten. And then reverse, it shows you the average daily attendance rate and what's up. Like these are kind of current numbers. I think that our data person pulled them as of three days ago. And so you might be saying, what does it look like right now? At this point, we're at thirty-two percent chronic absenteeism rate, but we've only been in school for, say, twenty days. And so this would be kids that have been absent for two or more days, followed to this number. And then our average daily attendance rate is a little higher than it was last year at eighty-nine. And then our average daily attendance rate is a little higher than it was last year at eighty-nine point four percent. This does show you a slightly different view, this is where we're in September of twenty-two, twenty-four. This says ninety-one point one-five for our average daily attendance. We're just a little bit below that eighty-nine point seven. This is as of September of this year. But you can see what happens across the course of a school year. Um, and so the question starts to become for our attendance team is what happens here between October and November that causes so many kids to start to drop in their attendance rate? And it almost feels like we can't recover back to where we were in September? And so our attendance team tries to dig in to figure out why. This is the reverse of our chronic absenteeism rate. So you can see how this number fluctuates, this is where we were in September twenty-three, twenty-four, um, at twenty-nine percent. Where we are right now at twenty-seven percent, so a little bit less than where we were last year. But you can see how this number sort of starts to creep up and then how we kind of ended last year around forty-nine percent. And so what are some of the things that we do? Um, if you subscribe to Parentsware, you're seeing Naomi's posts that she puts out pretty regularly about attendance incentives. I think today, um, she delivered bracelets to classrooms, um, for children that attended ten days in a row of school. Um, I know I was here to cheers as Ms. Greggs was going into the classrooms because kids did earn bracelets and many classrooms had many children that earned bracelets today. So if your little dragon came home with an attendance bracelet today, it's probably because they hit the ten-day-in-a-row mark. Um, so those are little incentives that we do. Um, we do, we will put a heavy push out to families about telling us why their child is absent. Um, and so it's really important for us to analyze, what is it that's causing absences? Is it a level of illness? If it is illness, you may feel like we're asking a lot of details, but sometimes it's really helpful for us to know, like, is the stomach bug going around? Is it conjunctivitis again that's happening and kids are getting some contagions in schools or outside of schools? How do we start to approach um the flu season a little bit differently and be a little bit more proactive around our hand washing? And reminders of good protocols around staying healthy? And then we will see kind of this flag for us around, um, what does it mean to have zero or five absences, five to ten, or everything in a red zone, we're not ten or more absences. And we talk about this notion of strive for ninety-five, because if you've been aiming for ninety-five percent attendance overall, um, you'd probably be in pretty great shape for the school year overall. Uh, and so we do have an attendance team that meets weekly. We do have an attendance paraprofessional that helps support Ms. Harris, does help support Ms. Greggs. And the work that she does, our full-time attendance engagement specialist, which is Naomi McGreggs for Kane Elementary School. Um, we do do like a coding system on the backend to help us, and they'll show you about how you send information to find out why your children are absent from school. Um, we do have obviously parent spread pushes that we push out. Um, we do do home visits with our social workers, Ms. Greggs, um, and some of our other community folks will go out and do home visits to see what else we can do to help get to school. And what are some of their uses? So, um, this does capture some of the excuses that we use or some of the reasons that we get from families about why their children are absent. And I can tell you that overall, when we look at this, the number one reason why children are absent, again, falls into an illness category um that we're finding that kids are still getting COVID, kids are still getting the flu, they still get, RSV was big last year and Cuxton virus. So there's the things that just kind of, you know, kids come to school, they sneeze and they share germs at school in such a nice way, I guess. Um, but then certainly, um, kids can get sick in the classrooms and also visiting other families and friends. So illness is still a major category, followed closely by appointments. And so if a family has an appointment, what we would say is send them to their appointment and then bring them to school. Or sign them out early if you need to bring them to appointment. But there should not really be a reason why a child would be out for the full day for an appointment unless it was certainly a longer medical type of long wait. Um, and then the other third top category is vacations, um, which is also an unexcused absence for children. Um, but we would ask families to really try to plan vacations around our school-based vacations that the district does offer rather than pulling your child out early to go to New York City for a long Friday weekend or extend that vacation through Monday. Um, because certainly there is still learning going on at school, and when your child is absent, even if they're on a vacation, um, learning is still moving forward in kindergarten. And that looks like letters and sounds that are being taught those days. And that might mean that your son or daughter is missing out on those letters that are being taught on Monday. The other indicator area that we were sliding for in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, what was considered a weapons possession inside of our elementary school. Um, it was a child that had a knife at the time. Um, and so New York State Education Department said, we had a higher rate than any other school in New York State. And so we were identified as being a school in need of a safety plan. And so because of one instance in twenty-one, twenty-two, we now monitor school safety throughout the course of the year. And in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, we had no longer had um these high-level offenses. And you can see what these high-level offenses are, falling into homicide category, sexual offense, school, physical assault, or a weapons possession. And remember, these codes exist for kids in pre-K through twelve-three. And so it is a New York State coding system that we have to use, and sometimes the interpretation of that seems like really an elementary school, but it's the same coding system in New York State regardless of where it's at. And so New York State says we can have higher than two, and obviously we're at zero, so we've met that target. Uh, I did want to play out for our people to see from twenty-two, twenty-three to now kind of where we are in September twenty-four, twenty-five. What has been our out-of-school suspension rate over time? And so last year, June of, uh, or June of twenty-two, twenty-three, we ended with twenty-four suspensions. Last year, we ended with eighteen suspensions overall, um, and this year, we had had one suspension, um, which was a three-day suspension. Uh, and again, this kind of just compares the rate of suspension over time, so you can kind of see what happens within the system. Because certainly, suspension is one indicator of it feeling like an unsafe place for children at times. And so sometimes we do have to have a child who moves along, et cetera. Um, so some of the things that we do for the community school model, I've spoken about Mr. Cook, he's our community school coordinator. Um, we analyze needs assessments, so you'll see Mr. Cook probably pushing out some information about our needs assessment. Um, some surveys that we might do with families in different ways, sometimes we're at community events and we ask you questions. Sometimes we give you a paper-based survey, sometimes we might be asking you a survey question on Parentsware. All of that is to help us gain information from families about how do we make this school better in meeting your needs? And so Mr. Cook is going to kind of lead the charge on determining what your needs are, um, and what you would like to see shift or change, uh, at Kane Elementary School over time. Um, we also, uh, form partnerships with Connections. One of our biggest partnerships is with the Connected Rotary, um, they've redone our community room for us, um, they've adopted us. They hold the cornhole for our cause event for us, which raises, um, almost twenty thousand dollars for us here at Kane to do activities with our students. They are helping to, um, support our attendance incentives. Um, Ms. Greggs is working on the N B A again this year, so that's the Never Been Absent Club, where kids get jerseys and shorts, um, socks and hats over time. They get kind of outfitted with an N B A uniform. Um, if they're to have perfect attendance for the entire school year, they would have the entire uniform over time. Um, and so that's, Connected Rotary is a partnership that helps us really with those types of incentives for our programs. Um, and then ultimately, the community school is really about a wraparound and creating a culture of care. Um, here at Kane is, um, we know that our families are our children's first teachers. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're learning from our families and how to best meet the needs of their children. Because they are in most prized possessions, um, and babies, so we want to make sure that we're leading their needs here at our school. Um, a couple of others, like I think you might hear your, um, children talk about dragon bucks. Um, this is a PBIS Positive Behavior Intervention Support. Um, it's a way that we give feedback, and so when children get dragon bucks, it means that they're upholding some of our agreements here at school of being safe, being responsible, and being respectful. And so each week, they get a total number of dragon bucks and they get to cash those dragon bucks in for some prizes. Sometimes that looks like, um, little bracelets or trinkets, um, but what our teachers are now shifting to is experiences. And so sometimes you might see something like crazy socks day or, you know, bring your, um, sit in the teacher's chair for the day, um, or special seating for the classroom. So teachers are trying to move away from kind of the trinkets to something a little bit more meaningful. Maybe it's a special lunch with the principal, maybe it's Zooming time, use our therapy dog. And so there's little coupons that those children can pick, and we're noticing that they're actually probably leaning more into experiences than they are into some of the, um, tchotchkes, as my wife would say. Um, and so you'll see these other different events that we have posted, the school life events overall, what does it mean to be respectful, be responsible, be safe? In the classroom, in our hallways, on the buses, in the gym, at recess, in our assemblies, and so those are our agreements that we have. Um, we also do the second step, um, which is, um, our social emotional curriculum. And so students are learning, right now, they're in a unit on growth mindset, um, and so how is it that our brains get smarter over time? So they're learning a little bit about that from kindergarten through fifth grade, um, and that we learn actually by making mistakes. And that our brains actually get rewired each time we do make a mistake, and mistakes actually make us smarter, not having the perfect answer. And so I feel like that's a really exciting part of what happens in the second step. Um, and then they launch into some bullying prevention, how to help support and recognize bullying that happens over time. Um, they go through some problem solving eventually and thinking of, um, solutions for problems that they might, um, encounter, conflict that they might experience. So second graders on the playground, when they experience a conflict, how do they help to solve that with, um, appropriate coping mechanisms? Or in the ways that we can find socially appropriate for school, rather than pushing each other on the playground to solve a problem? So, um, that is our social emotional curriculum. You might also hear kids talk about circles that they do inside of the classroom, so this is part of restorative practices. Um, and it's what we do to help build community. And so the kids will circle up, um, and they'll have a talking piece that goes around and how they build relationships with one another and their teacher or other adults that are inside the classroom is by engaging, um, in a circle protocol and learning about one another. So your children might be talking about circles that they do in class as well. And then some of the events that we have, um, obviously trunk retreat has been a very popular event, so we will be having trunk retreat on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Um, once again this year, um, as a pretty significant event that we partner with Liberty Church for. Um, and the Connected Rotary will also help us with this event as well. Uh, but trunk retreat will be a pretty popular event, and I think we have, um, what feels like thousands of kids on that day. All I know is we go through a tremendous amount of candy on that day. The Rotary is helping to provide us with extra costumes, so if your family needs a costume for Halloween, um, the Rotary will have plenty of those donations for us. And we also are using Parentsware as our app, so I just put a little end it up here. If you don't have that downloaded on your phone, you can download that Parentsware app, um, so that you can get access to your teacher's classroom, um, or to building messages. Overall, I know Mr. Cook, Ms. Greggs, and I tend to post quite a few messages out to families. And you can see kind of here what our usage has been, um, overall. We're finding that most of our families are engaging via email with this app as opposed to on the actual text message. So, um, just some different things that we get out, um, and different appreciations that we've had. Certainly, we see that when we make videos of your kids in the classroom, those tend to have the highest like rate. But it falls in form to something like a Facebook where you can like or appreciate different posts and stuff. And then overall, this time, like how we're doing with leading these phases, we can see we've met a lot of these benchmarks. It has to do with, do we provide, um, notifications and information to family in the variety of languages that our students and families speak? Um, do we provide opportunities for families to know what's happening for parent-teacher conference nights or, um, for our open houses? And how we share information with our families? The one area that we kind of have met here, um, in this category, it's still a struggle, is, um, that our students should be leading parent-teacher conferences. And so that's a big shift for our staff overall, because traditionally, it's been the teacher that leads that parent-teacher conference. But our goal over time, um, is to get children into a place where they are really the ones that are driving that conference and sharing with you, mom, or dad, what it is that they're working on in school. That's all. But right now, unfortunately, what happens is our parent-teacher conferences are at night or after school hour sometimes, or in the afternoon part of the day. And so it's not, we don't have the kids as a captive audience to lead that conversation necessarily, so some areas. Um, and then this locker that I talked about, we are launching a new tool called Bullseye. Um, it is an app, a computer-based, uh, system where, uh, as administrators or coaches, we can go into the classrooms and see what teachers are doing and provide feedback to teachers, um, about their practices. So we can analyze school-wide trends overall, the teachers get immediate feedback, um, as soon as we're done in the classroom, that it would be emailed to them directly. So they can see, we can do it on any type of device, a computer, our phone, um, and so it's accessible in many different places. And we really customize it for what we want here at Kane Elementary. And so what can you do as families, um, to help us with this work? Um, again, I would go back to ensuring that your children are attending school every single day. Obviously, we would love to have them here a hundred percent of the time, but as much as you can do to get them here every day, um, we say, like, read, read, read all the time. Anything you can read with kids, but keep it fun. Don't try to make this a quiz at home, just try to keep it calm here for the one. Ideally, every night, at least twenty minutes. Um, talk to your parents about school, share with us what's going well, what they're struggling with. If the kid says at first, nothing, like what happened at school today, if they say nothing, I promise you, something happened at school, they learned something. And so probe them a little bit further, like, what are you reading about? Like, what math are you doing today? I'm sure they can share something that's a little bit happening. Um, and then talk to your friends and families about getting involved here at Kane. Mr. Cook will push out plenty of events. We had a really awesome father's event in the opening weeks of school, um, and father figures. We had a really great turnout for that, trunk retreat, different types of events that we do throughout the school year. We love to have your partnership, our P T O, we're always looking for parents to be part of our P T O. Uh, and Shanti is our parent liaison, um, she does help to oversee the P T O with Octavius. And so if your kids would join the P T A, you can reach out to Shanti or Octavius. Um, and again, any sort of event planning, if you've got a really good idea of what your kids would love to do, if we just had a location, we could probably host it. And so just let us know what you would love to have here at Kane, and we can certainly work with Mr. Cook to make that happen. And then certainly share your ideas with us, um, if there's things we're doing here at school that are not meeting your needs, please share with us what we can do to change and adjust so that we can better meet the needs of your children and coaches, that's all there. And that ends this presentation. Does anybody have questions? Comments? I know it's a lot of information, sometimes people just want some time to process. And so, um, certainly if you have questions along the way, you can stay back, heading out here afterwards. I'm happy to stay and just answer any questions that folks I have. Um, and, and/or if you walk away from this meeting and you thought, man, I wish I could just ask this, by all means, you can certainly email any of us um, or reach out to any of the folks here at school, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.